The Board, we're now coming to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mister Clerk, please call the rolls.
All the woman Tyus, all the woman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Davis, You have twenty-two present, you have a quorum, Mister President.
Thank you. Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by none other than Pastor Ernest Byrd from Full Gospel Spiritual Temple. He's all, Pastor Byrd is also a payroll specialist at the Fire Department, and he was the youngest pastor to be ordained in the state of Missouri, it's been eleven years ago now, and attended that service, and it was just magnificent, so please welcome Pastor Byrd.
Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into no temptation, but deliver us from evil. Father God, we pray for these your people on this morning, God. We ask that you touch their minds, touch their hearts, Father God. We pray for a successful session on this week, that legislation will be passed to better the citizens of the city of Saint Louis. We pray for our president of Board of Aldermen, President Reed and his family, God. We pray for all of the Alder men and all of the Alder women that's present. We pray for safe streets in the city of Saint Louis. We pray for our public safety officers, our firefighters and our police officers, that they will be safe as they are out protecting the citizens of the city. We pray for all of those that have leadership and rule over us. We pray that even in this year, as we're in the winter months, that we pray for those that are homeless and that are sleeping out on the streets. Father God, we pray that you cause an end to the violence and gun violence and disasters that's happening in our community. We thank you for a body that is willing to come together in unity for the betterment of the people, that we may be able to reclaim our city, that we'll be able to reclaim our children's playground, and we'll be able to declare truthfully and honestly that our city is a safe city. Our city is a city that is able to raise your children and have a productive family. We pray that even as the legislators continue, that legislation will be passed, oh God, that everybody will be able to understand and appreciate the values of this city, the morals in which this city stands for. These are all of the blessings we ask in your darling son, Jesus' name, amen.
Let's give a big round of applause to Pastor Byrd. He's still the youngest pastor to ever be ordained in the state of Missouri, and that's quite a, quite an accomplishment. Alderman, from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolution Calendar?
Mister President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Move by the order from the eighteenth, and entertain the second, second by the order from the twenty-sixth. Alderman from the ninth, would like to approach the dais.
It's my honor today to bring up a good friend, Juanita Franco and her family. I'd like to just read the resolution, Resolution Number 205, to present to Mrs. Franco. So, whereas after more than twenty-nine years of dedicated service to the city of Saint Louis, Mrs. Juanita Franco will retire from the city on January thirty-first, 2018, whereas Mrs. Franco began her career with the city of Saint Louis on September thirteenth, nineteen eighty-eight, when she was appointed as a clerk typist for the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department. Mrs. Franco then performed with the city courts, the mayor's office, Lambert Airport, the Justice Center, the Fire Department, and she is currently in the multi-grap section with the Supply Division. Whereas Mrs. Franco's integrity, commitment to professionalism and dedication to our city and residents was evident on many occasions, she gathered city resident signatures and lobbied officials in nineteen ninety-six to successfully reinstate the twenty-four-hour Spanish-language programming from all city residents, including those in the Hispanic community, that relied on it for news when it was abruptly removed from the air. Whereas Mrs. Franco's customer service shined through as a volunteer Spanish translator for the travelers flying through Lambert Airport, the judges and civilians at the city courts, and the police department over her career. Whereas Mrs. Franco assisted city representatives in two thousand and three to successfully pass legislation to identify and fairly compensate city professionals that proficiently and regularly used a foreign language in their city-related duties. Whereas Juanita will move into a new phase of her life to pursue other passions and spend time with her husband, Andreas Franco, two sons, one daughter and nine grandchildren, with one more on the way in twenty eighteen. The city of Saint Louis is pleased to extend a sincere thank you to Mrs. Juanita Franco for her long and productive service that she has made to our city, and to wish her good health and much happiness in her retirement and future endeavors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen, that we pause in our deliberations to express our sincere appreciation for Mrs. Juanita Franco for her almost over twenty-nine years of service to our city and her many contributions, and we further wish Ms. Franco her best in her retirement, and direct the clerk of the Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a manner of copy to the end that it may be presented to our distinguished honorees at the time and place introduced today and adopted January the twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the Board. I also would like to thank Juanita for her years of service. Actually, Juanita's family, myself, all grew up together down in the patch years ago, growing up as kids and all hung around together. I've known Juanita and her family a long time. Juanita, you've always been very dedicated to the city employee, and we really appreciate that, and I wish you the best on your retirement. Mister President, it's okay, I'd like to have my name added to the resolution.
Mister Clerk, please make note of that change. Ed Alderman from the twelfth's name to the resolution.
So noted.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Juanita, I just want to, on behalf of people who aren't here, who won't have an opportunity to thank you for all your years of service, I want to say thank you on their behalf. And also say thank you on my behalf and my family for all your years of service. You've made a difference in our city, you've served well, you're fully, fully entitled now to your full retirement, but I'm sure we're going to bring you back in some capacity, because it sounds, it sounds like the Alderman from the twelfth and Alderman from the ninth really likes you, so, so expect a call, and they'll probably ask you to volunteer for something. But, you know, this is, as you know, this resolution is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual, and it's but a piece of paper, but what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this moment. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the city of Saint Louis, they're going to see your name amongst those records and know that you passed this way and contributed, so much so that we pause today on our deliberations to recognize you and to congratulate you on a job well done. Let's all give her a big round of applause and thank you for that.
Yeah, it's been a long time. I started in nineteen eighty-eight, and I, I worked for many departments, and I got to meet a lot of really nice people, and I'll always continue to help, always. So I'm here with my son Cipriano, my son, my son Gabriel, my daughter Juanita, my niece Maria, my husband, my husband Andres, and my, and my granddaughter Camila, she's here somewhere, there she is. Thank you all very, very, very much.
Calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest. Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Yes, Mister President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, I believe is Major or Colonel George Harsley with the City of Saint Louis Sheriff Department. Thank you.
Alderman from the thirteenth?
I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans from the Carpenters Regional Association. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderwoman from twenty-seven?
And those guys.
You're good, Alderman, Alderman from twenty-seven?
Thank you, Mister President. I wanted to recognize Frederick Cersey, Director of Minority Recruitment, and previous Alderwoman Dion Flowers from the Second Ward.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
Mister President, members of the Board, glad to see that you survived the plague that took out half our staff.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'd like to have as my special guest, I got Keith Taylor from the Carpenters, Fred already got introduced, but I got Greg Meyer from Hills Park Neighbor Association, our old clerk Dave Sweeney from Lewis Rice, and Sinette Magnus from Lewis Rice with me.
What about Jeff?
They introduced Jeff.
Oh, they did, okay. Further introductions. Alderman from the fourteenth?
Mister President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have as my honored guests Demetrius Alfred, Nathan Lett, representing Firefighters Local Seventy-three, Joanne Williams, my friend, and Clinton McBride, representing Labor's Local One Ten.
Alderman from the twenty-first?
Hey, thank you, Mister President. I'd like to have Mister Tori Russell, who is a resident of Twenty-first Ward, International Black Lives Matter surrogate.
Absolutely. Welcome, Tori. Thanks for all your work, man. Alderman from the fourth?
Mister President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest today John Washington, Sean Weller, and Dave Sweeney. My very special guest today is, you know who?
Pastor Byrd. Alderman from the twenty-second?
I want to thank you, Mister President, members of the Board. I'm going to share in Pastor Byrd being my special guest since he's a constituent of mine, as well as Megan Shackelford with the Kelly Group.
Any further introductions, any further? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mister President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office, and also I see Dale Rusain from Saint Louis Development.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Good morning. I'd like to welcome a former Saint Louis Public School student and one who used to follow me and wanted to learn, Pastor Byrd.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Well, one of the things I just want to point out is, as the Alderman from the twenty-third said, both Lisa and Donna are out sick today. That's the first time I've seen that in, forever, but there's a lot of stuff going around, and, but we have a great Mister Clerk and a great assistant here today that's going to help us get through today, so please bear with him. Alderman from the tenth, would like to wrap us up?
Hey, give us, Mister President, members of the Board, we're gathered here on January twenty-sixth. It was on this day in nineteen twenty-six, the first television was ever demonstrated. It was on this day in nineteen ninety-eight that, seventy-two years later, Bill Clinton, our sitting president, was on TV saying he did not have sexual relations with that woman. I miss those days of that president. Thank you very much, it was fun, but this is also National Funnet Work Day, which apparently your staff decided not to participate in, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Prove of the minutes?
We have none.
Report to city officials?
We have none.
With dispensal line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize?
President and members of the Board, I'd like to ask, make a motion to move Board Bill One Seventy-four from the informal calendar to the third reading and consent.
All right, here are no objections. Mister Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill One Seventy-four on third reading consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off any of our informal calendars? With dispensal line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Two Forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Bismarck Street, which will begin at the intersection of Barton Street and Seventh Street and run north on Seventh Street to Lammey Street. Board? Okay. Board Bill Two Forty-five, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Oldenburg and Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance directing the Saint Louis Development Corporation to complete an annual city economic growth strategy report and present the findings of the report to members of the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Aldermen Financial Analyst. Board Bill Two Forty-six, sponsored by Alderman, Alderman Oldenburg, President Reed and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance pertaining to the additional sales tax and corresponding use tax established by ordinance number seven oh five eight zero prohibiting any special reallocation of the revenue generated by such taxes for any purposes other than those specified in ordinance number seven oh five eight zero except as approved by the Board of Aldermen in an independent appropriations board bill that is independent of the Board's adoption of the city's annual operating plan for the applicable fiscal year. Board Bill Two Forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the Forest Park Scattered Sites V, or possibly Roman numeral five. Board Bill Two Forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue notes. The Saint Louis Innovation District RPA Three Redevelopment Project, Series A, Series B, and Series C in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one eighteen million four hundred thousand dollars plus costs of issuance for certain reimbursable redevelopment project costs associated with redevelopment project Area Three of the Saint Louis Innovation District redevelopment area in accordance with the terms of redevelopment agreement and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance adopting and approving redevelopment projects for redevelopment project Area Three as directed in the amended and restated Saint Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, adopting tax increment financing within redevelopment project Area Three, establishing the RPA Three account of the Saint Louis Innovation District Special Allocation Fund, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city and Saint Louis Innovation District Limited Liability Corporation, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, authorizing certain actions by city officials, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Fifty, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Three Hundred South Broadway. That is the extent of the first reading, Mister President.
Is that the end of the first reading, yes? Reference to committee?
To Ways and Means, Board Bill Two Forty-six. To Streets, Board Bill Two Forty-four. To Neighborhoods, Board Bill Two Forty-seven. To Housing and Urban Development, Board Bill Two Forty-five, Two Forty-eight, Two Forty-nine, and Two Fifty.
Second reading.
Board Bill Two Thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Clinton and Olathe, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Clifton at Olathe, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Clifton at Olathe, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Forty-three, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, Alderwoman Murphy, and Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance requiring the city information technology services agencies to create and maintain in good functioning order a calendar on the homepage of the city website specifically for the purpose of publishing required notifications of city departments and divisions' public meetings as the term is defined in Missouri statute six one oh point zero one oh, and requiring said city departments and divisions to publish notifications of public meetings on said calendar. That is the extent of the second reading, Mister President.
With dispensal line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill Two Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Gunther, and President Reed, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Streets to develop and promulgate rules and regulations with the approval of the Board of Public Service, consistent with Chapter Seventeen of the Revised Code and other applicable laws to facilitate the regulation of bike sharing as defined herein.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Mister President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by the order from the eighteenth, entertain the second motion, second by the order from the thirteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries, with dispensal line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill Two Oh Three, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, and Alderman Kotar, Davis, Alderman Davis, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Gunther, and Alderman, Alderwoman Ingracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the city establishing multiple public works and improvement projects within the city. Board Bill Two One Five, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance establishing a three-way stop at the intersection of Devonshire and Childress, regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Devonshire at Childress, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Devonshire, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One Twenty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, an ordinance adopted pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement Act, Sections seventy point two one zero to seventy point three two five, inclusive of the Missouri Revised Code and authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District for the purpose of sharing certain water data in the possession of the city with the Metropolitan Sewer District for fair and substantial compensation received by the Metropolitan Sewer District, containing a severability clause and a governance clause. Board Bill Two Twenty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of lead hazard reduction demonstration grant funds appropriating the sum of two million one hundred thousand dollars which the city has been awarded for the LHRD program, authorizing and directing the Director of Community Development Administration to contract with municipal agencies, nonprofit corporations, and other entities for the expenditure of LHRD funding, and directing the comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the city treasury, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, two twenty-four, apologies, by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and contract for sale for the sale of property between Saint Louis and Union Electric Company, doing business as Amrin, Missouri, providing for the sale of approximately one point three nine nine four acres of property for the sum of eighty thousand dollars, the quitclaim deemed to the agreement entitled Form of Quitclaim Deed for Saint Louis Property, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of the Saint Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Restated and Amended Lease Agreement between the city and Signature Flight Support Corporation, amending the restated and amended lease agreement dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. The First Amendment was approved by the Airport Commission, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, the owner and operator of the Saint Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to Lease Agreement AL Two 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 between the city and MHS Travel and Charter, Inc., amending the lease agreement dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill One Ninety-three, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Davis, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Arnowitz, and Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance amending ordinance six nine four two nine by repealing Section Two and Section Three of that ordinance and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section Two and a new Section Three pertaining to the same subject matters and containing an emergency clause. Do I miss one? Board Bill One Seventy-four, President Reed, sponsored by President Reed, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making a supplemental appropriation to the annual budget ordinance seven oh five four zero for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, amounting to the sum of thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the third reading perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar?
Mister President, I'm over here. Mister President, members of the Board, I move that the, was it, the Board adopts the perfection consent, the?
Third reading consent calendar. Been moved by the order from the eighteenth, seconded by the order from the twenty-seventh and the thirteenth. Any discussion? Mister Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin. Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed?
Aye.
What's the total?
Twenty-four aye votes.
Oh, do I have to go back and read? I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore?
Is that him?
Alderwoman Ingracia? Twenty-four aye votes.
That's including the additional one from Alderman Moore. It was our, it's been, all right. By vote, stand the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments. We have none.
We have none.
Report of enrollment?
Board Bill two-oh-three, two-fifteen, one-twenty-six, two-twenty-seven, two-twenty-four, two-twenty-five, two-twenty-six, and one-ninety-three. One-seventy-four.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law.
Resolution two-eleven, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, pursuant to ordinance six-seven-seven-nine-four, the Public Safety Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee for the appropriation of crime prevention program funds for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Attached heretofu is Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution two-eleven?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that Resolution two-eleven be sent to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please sign Resolution two-eleven to public safety.
So noted.
Second reading. We have none.
We have none.
Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, January thirtieth, twenty eighteen, there will be a meeting of the Neighborhood Development Committee at nine a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, January thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, there will be a Streets Traffic and Refuge Meeting at nine a.m. in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, there will be a meeting of the Ways and Means Committee at nine a.m. in the Leisure Room. On January thirtieth, thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, there will be a Housing and Urban Development Meeting at nine a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And a full board meeting at ten a.m. on February second, two thousand and eighteen. That is the extent of the announcement, Mr. President.
Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Two years ago, we applied and received the bid for, we won the bid for Newstead Street Gate Phase One. That's from Natural Bridge to New, to St. Louis Avenue, with a little input from the Twenty-first Ward, John Muhammad. We, it's coming to completion, and I'm going to invite everybody to the ribbon cutting. I'll let you know the dates later, but it is a beautiful scene to see Newstead Avenue fixed up like that, with over two million dollars in infrastructure grant, so we invite everybody to come out and look at, see, like Freeman Bosley used to be about Salisbury, that I am about Newstead.
Excellent, excellent. Well, congratulations, Alderman.
How about a round of applause?
Yeah, yeah, big congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Alderman from the eighteenth, did you have an announcement?
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to call a Public Safety Committee meeting for Tuesday, January thirtieth at eleven a.m. in the Kennedy Room to hear Board Bill two-twelve and Resolution two-eleven.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow is Alderman from the ninth, Gunther's birthday tomorrow.
Yeah, happy birthday, Gunther. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the first, the sixth, and the eleventh be excused for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, February second, ten a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.